Item D.
Item 6D, Receive an Authorized Mayor to Sign Statement of Concern to California Senate Bill 50, Weiner, as amended on Housing Opportunity Mobility Equity and Stability Act and its impact to the City of San Bruno.
So this must be a good presentation where the city manager, he just left his seat. So, I mean, he's over there.
Sure, I will explain why I'm here. I'm here actually sitting in for, or standing in, rather, for our Community Development Director, Darcy. We actually have a number of our senior executive staff attending a Essentials of Emergency Management training session in San Luis Obispo. Actually, everybody who you see here tonight attended a session in January, and the last half is attending a session this week, actually funded by a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And so, in Darcy's absence, I will present this item here tonight, and we are currently pulling it up. Melissa, can you help? So, I'll give a little intro while we're pulling up the PowerPoint. So, we are giving a presentation tonight on Senate Bill 50. As the city council and many members of the public will know, there are a number of bills that were passed last year, and then a number of bills that are also pending this year to deal with the housing crisis facing the state of California. And so, the city staff has been tracking a number of the CASA Compact bills, as well as SB 50. SB 50 is sponsored by Senator Weiner, but also has a host of other sponsors in both the Senate and the Assembly. And so, one of the things we've been doing is working with some of the other cities in San Mateo County to monitor the potential impacts of SB 50 as it would relate here in San Bruno. And so, tonight, we wanted to give the community an update of some of that work, and also give the city council an update of a statement of concern that we are recommending that the city council issue on behalf of the City of San Bruno.
And then, as we're getting to that moment, I was going to say also, we can hear from the Vice Mayor as well after, who was in Sacramento today, actually speaking to legislatures and going through that, as well as, I know the city manager and I attended a meeting on March 15th in Redwood City, and that was with a representative from each of the jurisdictions, and even from Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, and it was again in regards to the same type of situation and concerns that agencies are having. So, we can also hear from that too at the appropriate time or whenever the manager wishes. Can we have, yes, Irene, Irene, would you mind?
Do you want me to fill in?
Again, Irene left at, what, 7:00 this morning, or?
Yes, I left early and stayed later than we had originally intended. So, I am the city's representative on our CCG board, that is the City-County Association of Governments. It's a regional board that has one representative from every city, there's 20 cities in San Mateo County, and has one representative from the Board of Supervisors. So, it was, that body was originally intended to be only a congestion management body. In its inception, 28 years ago, that's how it started. There's a lot of other details, which I won't bore you with. But we have evolved so that part of our mission is to keep track of legislation that has an impact on local entities, which includes all of our cities. So, having said that, a subcommittee of our full board is a legislative committee, is comprised of 11 members. I am the chair of that this year, and we send a delegation to Sacramento every year and meet with different legislators and their staff to discuss the impacts their proposed legislation would have. So, that's what we did all day today. We met with, unfortunately, we were scheduled to meet with Senator Weiner, unfortunately, he was caught up in some other meetings, but he did send his staff, and they took copious notes. We met with Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, Assembly Member Phil Ting, and then we met with Deputy Director for Legislation at California Department of Housing and Community Development, who also took copious notes, and the Assembly Housing and Community Development Representative, and two staff members from the governor's office, and Senator Jerry Hill. So, we met with all those people. Each time we met, we had a good half an hour with each of them, and we spent time discussing our concerns about not just SB 50, but all the different housing bills. There's over 200 housing bills that are coming up this legislative session, and they're all trying to put a fix on the housing issues that we have. And you heard from the very beginning of our community priority survey, that's the first thing that's on there, is people concerned about housing costs, and then, again, some people concerned about overdeveloping. So, we as cities are in a conundrum. We are elected to serve you residents and to protect what you have, but we're also mandated through the state to provide housing, not provide housing, to allow to, developers to provide housing for people who would come in and move in our cities. Senate Bill 50, and it looks like Javon is ready to explain it, so he has more details, and you can look at it, and go ahead and do that, and then I'll tell you what we did the rest of the day.
Sure. So, we have recovered from our technical difficulties. So, a quick overview of, our presentation is a quick overview of SB 50. We want to review staff's analysis and areas of concern. And then, what we're doing is we're requesting the mayor, that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a statement of concern with regard to SB 50. So, SB 50, what is it? And some of these points are taken directly from Senator Weiner. So, SB 50 aims to legalize more housing near job centers and public transit by overriding what's been termed hyper restrictive low-density zoning while protecting against displacement of renters in vulnerable communities. It really aims to address California's unprecedented housing shortage, and some of the statistics cited are staggering. We all know them because we live in the peninsula, but California's housing deficit is about 3.5 million homes, which is roughly equivalent to the housing deficit in all of the other 49 states in the country. And so, SB 50 really has a laudable goal. It's aimed at actually having more housing constructed. One of the challenges, or the other thing that SB 50 does to accomplish this, however, is that it proposes sweeping statewide changes to local land use control. And so, it provides developers, housing developers, with a number of incentives that would apply to all cities, including San Bruno. It provides a waiver of local regulations with respect to density, how many units per square foot. In regard to height, how tall buildings can be, and in regard to onsite parking standards. It also provides up to three additional incentives or waivers under the state density bonus law. So, what does all of that really mean? What it means is that San Bruno and other cities in California would have very limited control over the housing that's developed, within one-half mile of fixed rail stations, for us, that's Caltrain, and within one-quarter mile of a high-frequency bus stop in a job-rich area. It is currently unclear if that will apply to El Camino Real, but a number of analysts from various regional bodies have taken a look at that. Some have actually concluded not, others have concluded that it may. And so, the bill is still in proposed stage, but there was recently a meeting of a number of cities along the peninsula, and we think that, a number of cities mentioned that the true intent is really to have it apply in a high-speed bus route similar to El Camino. And so, we're paying close attention, because should these apply to El Camino Real, it will have sweeping impacts along San Bruno, our major road artery, and other cities in the peninsula. And it limits cities' ability to control height. Actually, it says that buildings cannot be lower than 45 or 55 feet, depending on various conditions, but that's essentially four stories within one-half mile of fixed rail. It also prevents cities from having a minimum parking standard, and we'll talk a little bit about that and the implications of that. But as we know, a number of our areas for additional housing abut residential neighborhoods that already have parking issues. And so, why don't we talk about the staff analysis? And so, the staff analysis is really that SB 50 really aims to address a valid issue of statewide concern. However, its impacts will be significantly negative on San Bruno. San Bruno's development regulations are really tailored to the various needs of the local community and our unique characteristics, and there's a couple of subbullets that I want to go through. As I said, much of our developable land for new housing really abuts low-density residential neighborhoods. What is low-density residential? Well, when you look at our downtown San Mateo Ave, San Bruno Ave, and El Camino, all of those which are in our transit corridor, abut single-family residential neighborhoods that oftentimes are one or two stories and may have some apartment buildings, oftentimes one or two stories, one to six-unit apartment buildings, but it's really low-density. San Bruno has adopted a Transit Corridors Plan and Measure N, which actually increased density around our transit centers in the TCP, which is actually one of the goals of SB 50. And so, we think that San Bruno has actually, unlike a number of cities, taken a step to in the, to address the core goal of SB 50, but we've done it in a way that's locally responsible. Many of our neighborhoods, commercial areas, or other uses, largely schools, daycares, metal offices, are not near transit or within walking distance of accessible transit. And one of the statistics that we cite in the letter is that the elevation change from our Caltrain station to the highest neighborhood is over 800 feet. Just the natural hilly topography of San Bruno really does not lend itself for all of our neighborhoods to be walkable and accessible by transit. And so, being able to manage parking is critical for a city like San Bruno. So, what are our areas of concern? We really have three. One, we think SB 50 disrespects local values and penalizes communities like ours that have adopted thoughtful approaches to increasing housing density. And largely, what we're saying by that is, San Bruno is not a NIMBY community, it's not a no-in-my-backyard community. In fact, San Bruno is a community that in 2014 approved Measure N to increase density in what the Transit Corridors Plan, densities have increased upwards of, in some areas, 90 feet or seven stories, in some areas, four stories and five stories. But we've done that respectfully and cognizant of the local issues that abound. When San Bruno went through the Transit Corridors Plan, we had extensive community meetings, we had two advisory bodies, there were residential surveys, there were community workshops, there were city council and planning sessions, and numerous other public meetings, and it was thoughtful. And we really think a statewide formula where developers can come into our community following a statewide format that doesn't reflect the thoughtful process that we have gone through really does not suit San Bruno well. And so, we are recommending that the council join the accord of other cities to highlight some of the areas of concern with regard to really taking away local control. The next item is SB 50 strips local control with respect to parking. As mentioned earlier, parking in San Bruno is significant. It's oftentimes when new development is proposed, the largest issue that we're concerned with. And as the city council knows, we recently amended the parking standards in the TCP to actually increase the parking that new developments have to provide, largely being is, in San Bruno, we are dealing with a built environment largely from the mid-1900s, where the road infrastructure and the houses don't really accommodate the number of vehicles that are owned by our residents. And so, what we don't want to do is, we don't want to replicate some of the challenges in the past, and by stripping cities' ability as a way to regulate parking for new developments, really what we're fearful of is that we'll replicate some of the prior mistakes. SB 50 and some of the leaders of SB 50 want to encourage additional transit use, they want to encourage very active, walkable, bikeable pedestrian communities, as do we. And that really is part of the intent of SB 50, I'm sorry, of the Transit Corridors Plan and SB 50. But we think doing that in a way that really strips our ability to work with proposed developments is actually detrimental to San Bruno communities. And we have a number of projects, some that will be coming forward to city council in a number of months, where we have been successful working with developers and letting them know about the unique challenges in San Bruno, and actually receiving changes to the proposed projects where additional parking was provided. The third item is SB 50 erodes a locality's ability to obtain design changes and community benefits to mitigate some of the negative impacts, and one of those that I just mentioned is parking. Another of those negative impacts is setting back, or what's often called stepping back from our residential neighborhoods. Because San Mateo Ave, because El Camino Real, and San Bruno abut residential neighborhoods, the Transit Corridors Plan envisions setbacks from those very low-density residential areas. SB 50, with allowing developers up to three additional concessions based on the state density bonus law, has the ability for developers to request and receive concessions that will not be discretionary to the city council. It will actually be something that they will follow a format outlined by the state. And so, in closing, we have developed a letter and really are, want to educate the community and the city council about some of the challenges that we see with SB 50. And the letter articulates these three concerns, as well as further articulating and requesting that if SB 50, or anything similar to SB 50 is passed, that Senator Weiner and the other cosponsors really consider exempting communities that have adopted a Transit Corridors Plan. Because as I said before, our Transit Corridors Plan went through a very rigorous community process and a vote of the people, and it was done thoughtfully with respect to the unique characteristics of San Bruno. And so, we will be formally requesting that, if the city council agrees, that communities like ours be exempted from any of these statewide requirements. Here, happy to take questions. Thank you.
Any questions, if you want to continue?
It's up to you.
Why don't we go back to Irene and allow her to continue with her day in Sacramento, which I'm sure was warm.
It was warm and extremely interesting, and everything our city manager said was absolutely true. The concerns, let's see, the difficulty is, the assemblymen, and not just Mr. Weiner, but many of the ones that we talked to, wanted solutions. They didn't want to hear over and over again, "It takes away local control." They've heard that, they don't care. They wanted solutions. So, the piece that the city manager talked about, about exempting cities that have, already have their Transit Corridors Plan-type things in place, I brought that up actually before to the CCG's Legislative Committee, and they enthusiastically supported that, and that was the message that we brought to every single legislator and staff person that we talked to. That met with some very positive feedback, and kind of a way out for everybody to say, "Okay, you are making an effort." And I kept repeating that we started our process in 2013, and we had many community sessions and had a lot of community input. So, that kind of perked people up and made them pay attention, and also, we talked about community, giving communities, which they do often in many state legislature, time to process and do their own Transit Corridors Plans or community plans. Redwood City calls theirs a community plan. So, again, they're taking all that back to Senator Weiner, and Senator Chu is another person who's supporting that kind of bill. There's amendments taking place tomorrow. We'll hear more about everything that's going on. But again, I want to emphasize, it's not just 50. 50 is kind of the fountainhead, as you would, of all these 200 different housing bills, and I think we really need to, well, maybe put that, CCG is paying strict attention to all of them, and I will be happy to report back to anything that we do. Every single person we talked to found it vitally important to have the letters that we're proposing tonight, those kinds of things. And I don't know if this is appropriate, and I guess it's not really because it's not on the agenda, but I'd like us to have the ability, and we can talk about it next meeting, but have the ability to write letters that follow general policies, but sometimes they need to be written and signed by the mayor, like now, tomorrow, before we get another, we have another meeting. So, I don't know how far we can push that, but maybe that's a discussion for next time. The other, oh, the other thing I want to say, and people keep talking about it, the SB 1 monies that is coming into all the cities, there's been talk about withholding that money if cities don't hit their regional housing target numbers, and maybe I should explain that. So, the regional housing numbers are numbers that the state sends to us that says, "You have to zone and allow for building of X amount of houses in these different categories: market, below-market, you know, low, and middle, and all those different things." So, those are, they're called RENA numbers. There was, there is a bill out there that is saying that if you don't produce those housing numbers, then we will withhold SB 1 transportation money. And that's the transportation money that helps pay for our new paving of our roads and some of the safety issues and road improvements that we're talking about. The governor wants everyone to know, he is not supporting that, he is not going to do that, and there is no legal precedent for anybody to do that. So, a lot of, we hadn't heard that from anyone, we kept hearing, "They were going to do it, they were going to do it." So, they're not going to do it, the governor's not going to do it. So, that was, that was good news. And there's tons more, we were there for six hours, but if you have other questions, let me know.
Thank you, Irene, for the feedback from today's trip, with the other electeds from other communities. Questions of, oh, there you go, city manager over there, city manager, Irene, Laura.
So, does the letter focus on, as she said, that they're not interested in saying, "No, no, no, we're not interested in that, we are interested, we're very interested in it, we know we need to approve housing in our community, but we've got a plan, and we have been working many years on this plan."
Yeah, and so, the letter talks about that, and the letter is actually titled, "A Statement of Concern," and not a statement of opposition, and it doesn't follow the typical format. There are some form letters out there that cities are sending. We really wanted to develop a letter that was unique to San Bruno, and that articulated the process that we went through, and so, we went through a couple of different versions to come up with something that we thought really embodied the conditions in San Bruno, because we are not like every other city on the peninsula. We are actually a city that has gone through a very thoughtful process, and that is working with developers to develop in a way that respects the unique challenges that we have, sometimes around parking in other areas, but other times, it's really setting back from those low-density housing.
Are there questions? Or comments? Or both? Marty?
One size doesn't fit all, especially when it comes from state or federal government, as clearly stated. I find it interesting, the statement of concern, it's a nice way of not saying no, but I want to say no. This isn't fit for us, so no. It has in there at the very end that we're willing to work with them, but for now, no. That's it.
Yeah, I was going to say, go ahead, Irene.
Okay, and there are many cities that are saying no, but he's dismissing those. I mean, he's taking the no's and going, "Okay," but that doesn't get us anywhere. So, I think the letter is a nice balance between saying, "We're unique, this is not going to fly with us," you know, all the concerns that have been written there, "But if you're going to push this through, at least, at least consider that we've already done what you are in essence asking us to do." My biggest problem, and, not biggest problem, one of the big problems that the city and individuals should have is their parking requirements. This particular draft that's in our, that's in our agenda packet says .5, so a half of a parking spot per unit. It doesn't define unit, it doesn't say per bedroom, it says per unit. So, you can have a three-bedroom unit that requires a half of a parking space for that unit. That's, this is old. They took that out. They require zero. And he has, and he, when we were questioning him about that, he said, "That would be a market-driven product," and that developers would supply parking if the market required it. Well, maybe somewhere else, but not here, because housing is so expensive anyway. So, you know, and this, that, he took that parking out after he met with us, and we, at CCG, for an hour, and heard all these different cities say, "No, no, 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 no." So, I understand why you're saying what you're saying, I agree wholeheartedly, except that it won't get us anywhere. So, that's my comment.
Michael?
I was just going to comment that I agree with the content, the tone of the letter, I think it was very well-written. I support the sentiment. I don't know why Scott didn't get the message last time around, but hopefully this time he'll realize that this is not what anyone in the state is looking for. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I keep doing this, but it was, like I said, a long day, and we heard a lot of things. Unfortunately, he is hearing from many people that it is what they want. I know. And it's just, there are, there are cities that are battling NIMBYism, and their councils or their Board of Supervisors want something from the state to force their communities to accept high-density near-transit. Oh, and just to clarify too, the definition they're thinking about, clarifying about the bus routes, is a 15-minute headway. So, if you have, if you're standing at a bus stop, and every 15 minutes, a bus comes by and you can get on it, that is considered, I forget what the term is now, but that's the high, high, high frequency, thank you, high-frequency bus routes, which is El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. So, we would be impacted quite a bit.
Yeah, and I think this is something, I think it was two years ago, at the Progress Seminar, Scott Weiner was there, and he's served on a panel, and which he heard from a lot of, obviously, it's county-based in San Mateo, and he heard from a lot of folks that were, "No, and it's not, you're not working with us." And back then, I remember, his point is too, is that, "Well, you folks," and he means folks as far as elected bodies and/or communities, "are not doing anything. So, now, we need to step up it, because you're not doing it." So, I also, when city manager and I were at the Northern County Mayor's Manager Lunch in Colma, a lot of some of the elected, some of the mayors there were also saying and hearing the same feedback, is, "They don't want to hear local control. Tired of it? You used that last time, you're saying it again, how are you going to work with us?" So, yes, where I don't know why he doesn't get it, but at the same time, he is hearing, as Michael said, he is hearing from others differently. There were two members of the Board of Supervisors for San Mateo who endorsed a resolution to bring forward to the board to support it, and then it got put on hold as far as the resolution, is because obviously, folks and pushback probably within other jurisdictions in this county came forward. But I think the importantness of it is too, we have a unique quality that other communities don't have, and we need to really tell that story, and we have to consider San Bruno, who we represent, and I think we do need, even Half Moon Bay, who feels they may not get much of it, depending on the bus routes. on the bus route, they won't get anything, they have, it was in the paper, they have a letter of concern. So they're even bringing in themselves for the greater good of the county. So I think just to say no and no, then where do we go? I think to say, "Here's our uniqueness of San Bruno, here's what this community has done." And again, talking doesn't hurt, and again, they're offering amendments, so we have to be able to put in our two cents and fight for our community as well as support our neighbors. But in essence, we're elected here, so we need to keep that open dialogue, and if there's favorable input that's coming for it, I think being willing to talk, we may still get somewhere. Those are my comments. But it is a concern, and I'll tell you, a lot of us go to various meetings, but it has been something that's very concerning to a lot of the electeds throughout this county. And like I said, when the city manager and I went to the Redwood City Library and met with 20, 25 agencies, it was quite concerning, and that was with Jerry Hill, who sponsored that meeting, and he's heard the same thing. And granted, he's one senator, as it was reminded, but, you know, it's back and it has more momentum than it did last time since 2018. Anyway, those are my comments. Any other further discussion or comments in regards to this letter?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Marty.
So I'm not saying, "No, I don't want to talk anymore." I'm just saying currently the way that the bill is written and it's being amended, it's no. Now, they could come back and change something and we'll be like, "Okay, now it's yes." But the way it's written, no means no. Doesn't mean we don't want to talk about it, doesn't mean we're willing to work with it, but how can we get more clear than that? And if they're saying, "Well, if you say no, we're going to disregard you anyhow," then it's like, well, saying, "We're just concerned about it," what does that get us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I don't know if there's a chair, go ahead.
Sorry. It was a very passionate day. The crux of the matter is, he's looking for a way to accommodate people or cities like ours, I think, from talking to his staff and talking to him at an earlier time. And for us to say, "We don't want you to take away local control," which we don't, "We don't want you to give too many consensuses to developers," which we don't, "We don't want you to take away our ability to regulate parking," which we don't, all those things, he's heard over and over and over again. Okay? What he wants is a way to solve it. So that's why I kept emphasizing, if a city has a plan, which we do, that city should be allowed to implement their plan, is the message that we over and over again said today. And any city, and the other piece of that, which I don't think I said, any city who wants to make a plan, to develop a plan, should be allowed to have a time period to do that, say, three years. And we also suggested that the state help with the technical end of it and the planning costs of it. And those pieces, and as long as the plans, which ours does, allows for higher density and does, in essence, the things that he is looking for, like putting it near transit, he is willing to entertain those changes. That's why this letter is important, and that's why it is important, today was so important to convey the message that we are giving you a solution that we think will work for any city, any city willing to go through the process that we did, or some iteration of it. So again, just to say, "No, we'll talk to you, but no." He's done that. He wants a solution from us.
Sure. So we are providing that to him in this letter.
Yes.
But it can't be really, really clear. It's Sacramento. You either, it's this or that. Okay, so for this, it's no. Now, he gives that, so we're not there.
Yeah, and not in a...
We're not there yet, we're not there yet.
Committee.
Do we need to do this today? Okay, so issue of concern, and the mayor signs, it's great, and then, go ahead. I see you want to jump in, all right, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Marty, go ahead. I mean, on a roll. City manager.
All right. I just want to add one comment and then point us to the conclusion in the letter and maybe proffer a little tweaks. But specifically with regard to the Bay Area, I think it's important to note that you have Senator Nancy Skinner from Berkeley, the mayor of San Francisco, the mayor of Oakland, and the mayor of San Bruno all supporting SB 50. And, I'm sorry, San Jose, sorry, Sam Licardo, San Jose, I'm sorry, Rico Medina. But you have, I'm sorry, Sam Licardo, the mayor of San Jose, the mayor of Oakland, Nancy Skinner from Berkeley, and the mayor London Breed of San Francisco, all supporting SB 50. On the peninsula, you have most of the cities that have said something sending letters of opposition. A lot of the ire from the SB 50 supporters is frankly targeted at the Silicon Valley. And so it is an expectation that the Silicon Valley cities will say, "No, we're against it." We have taken a slightly different approach to say, "We have areas of concern. We do not think this is the right fit for San Bruno." We clearly articulate why, and we articulate the very thoughtful process that we went through with Measure N and the Transit Corridors Plan. We end the letter by saying in closing, "San Bruno appreciates your willingness to meet with the CCG Legislative Committee, of which council member Irene O'Connell is the chair of, and applaud your passion and willingness to tackle the housing crisis that is affecting Californians in the Bay Area and across the state. Unfortunately, as written, SB 50 will harm San Bruno and other communities across the state. We strongly encourage you to consider the issues that we raised in this letter and avoid penalizing communities that have adopted Transit Corridors Plans, which increase heightened density near transit centers from any statewide requirements. San Bruno looks forward to collaboratively working with you and other state legislators on strategies and funding mechanisms to ensure public transit and housing further in ways to ensure that local issues are thoughtfully considered and incorporated during the development process." And so I think we are clearly saying no, but I think we are also saying, "We're willing to work with you," and we've articulated our concerns. I think there is a place here where we can add in the word "no," if that is...
Or something, just, no. But just as currently written?
We cannot support this item.
There you go.
So unfortunately, as currently written, we cannot support this item, period. SB 50 will harm San Bruno and other communities. And so that's the second sentence.
Because they're also still having in committee, they're still going through stuff. So the letter can go up tomorrow, and it can change by Friday.
Absolutely. And there is a committee meeting tomorrow, and we are set to have the mayor sign the letter. We can redraft it and have the mayor sign the letter with this change and get it to the committee tomorrow.
Mayor.
Yes, Marty.
Is what you're reading from what we have in our packet?
Yes, I read the conclusion, which is the last page, 404, of the letter in your packet. It starts with, "In closing, San Bruno appreciates."
Okay. I didn't see Irene O'Connell.
That's not in there. I added that. It says to me...
Okay, all right, just making sure, just making sure we're all talking the same thing. So, I got it. All right, all right, all right, I got it. You're going to revise it, you're going to put the word "no" in there somewhere or something strong.
How we talked. Okay, he just articulated it, so hopefully that, are you okay with that? Are you okay with that, Irene?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and the reason, you know, I'm glad we spent this time, but I think this is a message of being unified on this council, for this community, and that we're making it clear, and we are going to lengths of special meetings, Sacramento, in order to try to secure for our community what our residents expect. So to me, it is very critical for this to be unanimous vote. With my signature, I would hope, and we don't have to, it doesn't have to be all of you, but I think that it's important that we're all on the same page and fighting equally and equitably for our community. So, yes.
Before we finish, so what could the resident out there do? Right? They could write, they could write a letter, they can call Weiner or Hill or all of our legislatures, right? Maybe Irene could kind of help us out on that.
Oh, absolutely. And every single legislator has a website page, and every single one of them has contact information, and I know their staff, everybody pays attention to those things. You may not get, you'll get, you know, we have received this, "Thank you very much" reply, but I know they weigh them, they look, "Oh, here's a no, here's a yes, oh, look, here's a suggestion that we can work with, here's this and that." So they are important. And I know Mr. Eichel sent a letter, and we appreciate that, and I know he's made comments in the past on patch, right? You've done those things, yes. So right now, SB 50 is a moving target, and there are many people weighing in on it. And as the city manager said, there are big guns out there, San Francisco, San Jose, Berkeley, you know, there's other big cities that want it to pass. But if we offer an alternative that works, I think they will, I'm hoping, cross your fingers, that they will consider it and implement it, include it in their bill. So having said all that, do you need a motion?
City attorney, do we need a motion or just agreement of the council?
Consensus.
So Marty, Laura, Irene, Michael, is there unanimous consensus to have that letter drafted for my signature?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I've heard yeses from all. Thank you.